Morning, everyone. If you could stand, please. Pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. I'm on my way in here again. Those that are in the audience, if you do speak or whisper, those that are online will most likely be able to hear. So Jake, if you could do roll call, please.
Ish, John.
Here.
Jim Mueller.
Here.
Steve McCombs.
Here.
Entertain a motion for today's agenda.
You would be a free group agent, nothing that would support them.
McCombs.
Hi.
Mueller.
Hi.
John.
Hi. Communications. Moving on to public comments. This is the portion of the agenda during which we can hear from the public that are, that is not on an agenda item below. These could possibly become future agenda items. Is there any public comments? And anything online? Seeing none, move on. Entertain a motion today for consent agenda.
Move to approve a consent agenda. Support.
Mueller.
Hi.
John.
Hi.
McCombs.
All right.
This is very long. I'm business. Item number one is the Marion County zoning. This would be to amend the Marion County manager's plan. Missy, I'll turn it over to you.
Of course, the first thing when we're looking on our exam, so we look at is the land use plan and the question for the zoning request is the land use. That being said, the other, the next step is that the land use and the rezoning, that means being amended, that amendment needs to be done prior to the review or resuming. Our recommendations change the land use is not a guarantee of rezoning will happen. It just needs to, that needs to be reviewed prior to. So with the situation we're looking at, obviously, I specified we're going from agricultural and all these shows agricultural on what used to be a farmstead on Island 163. The request is to go to light industrial. The reason we're looking for light industrial is the uniqueness of this parcel is there is a what we call night watchman houses can be utilized. That's not allowed in commercial. So in order to keep a house which, I mean, the subject was still installed and then wanted to utilize as a Washington art overseer, a proposed future use of storage units, we would need to go through light industrial. So because of those, you know, there's a compatibility chart in our land use plan and the compatibility shows light industrial compared to agricultural or graded at two. So proposed land use is reasonably compatible with the adjacent land uses. Structure should be consistent with the surrounding buildings above in one. Traffic from higher intensities should be directed away. So as of course with London that we really never had issues with on many storages, these traffic. So and many storage units are compatible. We have them outside of several of our rural residential subjects. My recommendations to amend the land use.
Board, do you have any questions from a senior or a senior?
Questions, so straight forward.
Steve.
No, I don't.
Entertain a motion to amend the Marion County land use plan. Eighty-five, one hundred ninety that.
Move to make that amendment.
I'll support.
John.
Hi.
McCombs.
Hi.
Mueller.
Hi.
On to item number two. This is the public hearing portion for the proposed zoning map ordinance twenty twenty-five dash seven. This is the request to rezone the parcel located at six forty-five, one hundred and ninetieth Avenue in Pella, Iowa. Again, this is the public hearing portion. Is there anybody here from the public that would like to speak on this? Anybody online? This is board. This is what Missy has spoke about and regarding amending. So this is the public hearing portion. So there is no public here to speak on behalf?
So, this is the regenerating portion of it. So as I proposed and have written, it would be light industrial restricted, restricted only for the purpose of many storage with a night watchman property. As you know, in reviewing the light industrial rezoning, if we don't do restricted, there's many uses that could go on that property which wouldn't be compatible with the subdivisions of the south. So that's, that's the reason for the restricted. The property owner is, is on board with that. So again, we're doing fifty-five, fifty-five point two six two as many warehousing and then fifty-five point two sixty allows for the night watchman property on the property. So the board of adjustments did review this for variance, the property owner. When we go to light industrial, the side setbacks to any type of agricultural or seventy-five feet. So we're looking basically the house and the current shop are within that seventy-five that they're actually forty. So the board of adjustments did grant a variance for the personal use or the night watchman use and then the personal storage use in the current shop. And we can allow them to be forty feet instead of the required seventy-five feet or any thirty-five foot variance. The remainder, the rest of the buildings that are shown on there have been or will be removed if the rezoning is approved. All the new buildings, so the various, it does not apply to any of the new buildings. So any of the new buildings, when the rezoning is approved, we come back, we will have to comply with seventy-five foot side yard. So again, based on the location of any rural residential subdivision, you know, happens a lot. It's the driveway, of course, has been reviewed by the county and the DOT during the process of sunset acres. It needs to know one hundred and fifty foot off Island one sixty-three and the comment that there did not need to be a turn lane. City Pella has compared this as outside of their jurisdiction. Again, there's a new section installed for the house. You can go to the next map. Okay, so in, in your packet, I included what the seventy-five looks to look like. So you'll have some idea of when I was talking about the variance for the house and the other building line. And then inside that barrier is where the, I mean, the property owner chose to take a two-step approach, make sure the rezoning would gain approval for spending the money on the site plan because it will be over ten thousand square feet. So they will have to also be intentioned. So some money involved in that. No, it's never a bad idea to wait until we make sure that it's going to get up for votes.
Missy, can you explain the night watchman? Is that a new concept?
That's been in the ordinance since I started for twenty-five years. Actually, prior to two thousand in commercials, I mean, they also allow a night watchman, but they do allow one residential dwelling, but an industrial area is considered a night watchman dwelling. So the, the, the situation with that is if it's rezoned, that house cannot be split off of that industrial property. So down the road, if somebody would want to split the house off, and we've had many talks, we've looked at many options for this to split the house separately and would require a subdivision and then there wouldn't be anything left despite a partial. So yeah, with that, they're aware that the house cannot be split.
And even though it's a night watchman, they don't have to be an employee of that facility. It can just be a rental property.
I mean, it is, yeah, that's not something that's going to be, be intended for the owner of the property is that they're going to have somebody in charge of the storage units and that's going to be part of their.
Okay. Bye. One other question. Reading through it, the one requires hard surface ingress and re-dress it, if I remember right. So are they going to go off that driveway that exists today? And is that section from one sixty-three to the start of that driveway, will that be hard surfaced as well?
So our, our ordinance states, I mean, obviously, a lot of times the right industrial is on hard surface. Our ordinance, as far as the site plan states, we only require hard surface within the right of way if the commercial property, the commercial driveway comes, is serviced by a hard surface. So in look at that clinic that was just approved a few months ago is all hard surface that I think within the right of way. We've updated that a few years ago because the belief is the more impervious surface we put out there, the more brain issues we have. And so, yeah, to answer your question and decide, we, I don't believe it, it's gravel that actually surfaces that. So there would not be a requirement for them to pay anything.
Okay. Thank you.
Again, just a reminder, this is the public hearing portion. Is there any public? Seeing none. Entertaining, to entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Close the public hearing. Clear.
McCombs.
Hi.
Mueller.
Hi.
John.
Hi. Item number three is ordinance twenty twenty-five dash seven. This sort of proved the first reading proposed zoning map ordinance twenty twenty-five dash seven and regarding six forty-five, one hundred and ninetieth Avenue, Pella, Iowa.
This could prove ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash seven, proceed.
Second.
Mueller.
Hi.
John.
Hi.
McCombs.
Hi.
Item number four is temporary site plan request from Chad Van Gort, also doing businesses down on the farm LLC.
So the special use, the temporary, they're actually decided they'll get a full special use permit because it exceeded what we felt was administrative review level. That was granted on July twenty-second and this temporary site plan presented to me today was presented to the zoning commission on the same day. So kind of rough sketch here of, as you can see, the red area on, on the map in the right-hand side, oh, it's my right-hand side. That's the area that we're looking, that they would go back into and then the closer up version of where the CAFOs can be, where the state can be. Not the other. So we went through what was in zone A one and neighboring property owners, as I stated, they were at the meeting, several times, we're discussed at the board of adjustment meetings. I think the majority of the questions and concerns were answered. They documented, we all did lots of research on the Eagle's Nest that sits across the river. And it was determined by the US Fish and Wildlife that this is not their breeding season and they did issue a permit. So with that being said, this is a shared driveway. Mr. Hartborn was at the board of adjustment meeting, asked for a kind of a revision of where they would put the ticket, ticket booth, ticket gate further back so there wouldn't be, because there's this private access does service for individual homes. And actually, you'll link that Mr. Hartborn at the process of the meeting. So there has been discussion. I did send this to the environmental health, nine emergency management, the sheriff's department, their road department, road department. Obviously, this is hard surface up to that private entrance. They have no concerns with it. I do believe there were discussions about private security and temporary fencing that would contain event goers from, you know, from the neighborhood area. It could be, board of adjustments did recommend and they are already mowing. So we see the access going in, but you can all the waterway, they've been mowing and they have what we've been called an emergency exit access. So if there were to be a necessity for emergency services, again, for some reason, there's another entrance. So this isn't a floodplain, so the floodplain manager did check because it's all temporary. There's nothing required to hold the event. I think the next agenda item that they, you guys have today is delivery license. So that was applied for after special use permit was approved. With that, they have to have insurance in place. It was discussed that their insurance will also cover any damages that may affect neighboring property owners. That was something that came between the neighbors discussing that not require the Marion County. So interest, of course, they have to be licensed by the state of Iowa. That's on case by case that they're going to try. And talking with environmental health, they have twenty cabins that'll have, you know, pump available if they need to be pumped or any type of emergency spill that may take place. I, you know, we advise that they have a medical area for non-emergent medical treatments. And it's advised that in the area that they're going to be gated to do the event, that they have more than one exit for safety reasons. And as I said, I believe that the site plan meets all the minimum requirements of a temporary site plan. So in the county, we have a full-on site plan for permanent you know, structure. And we have what we call a temporary site plan, which is a review, but not as close as.
Missy, how many people do they plan to attend to have a participant?
Chad, you have an answer to that? I think in the inaugural one, I don't know that there's a good feel of
Thousand, maybe Saturday night.
Quite interesting that you have to get it all legal disturbance.
Let's not be over.
We all learn a lot about ball eagles. And I want to thank our county conservation, the DNR and the state. They were all very Kail was very helpful in researching the ball eagle. But that ball eagle permit was kind of a new changer for the event to happen. So.
No, I appreciate the due diligence, Chad, behalf of, you know, working through the process. I know the process isn't always easy, especially when working with government. So.
Chad, did you get a raccoon disturbance permit?
Haven't yet. I can try this out.
Anyways, I don't have any further questions or comments. I don't know what the board does.
I know it looks like it's pretty thorough.
Entertain a motion for the approval of the temporary site plans.
I make a motion to approve temporary site plan.
Support.
John.
Hi.
McCombs.
Hi.
Mueller.
Hi.
On to item number five, which is the plus seed retail alcohol license for the outdoor service application, which would be for a down on the farm LLC. Board, this is process that comes through us and Jake, you received this.
Yeah, we just received notification from Alcohol Beverage Division when the applicant has gone through all the process. They've satisfied all the requirements for PBB, including proof of gram shop insurance, proof of sketch and control of the land or lease. All of this has been provided. We don't get the, we don't get the go-ahead until then. So they've satisfied all of those requirements. Once we get this application, we send it out to all departments. I've heard, have heard no names.
Board, no further questions. Entertain a motion to approve the alcohol license for down on the farm.
Move through the alcohol license for down on the farm through five days.
Second.
McCombs.
Hi.
Mueller.
Hi.
John.
Hi. On to item number six. This is an appointment for Aging Resources of Central Iowa. Board before us, we have an open position. Rachel Cecil had, was on that, fulfilled that position for Marion County and Rachel has moved jobs and no longer can serve. Aging Resources has reached out and spoke with Roy Richardson. If you remember, Roy is the person that was here for the senior center the last time. So I think Roy would do a great job. I have no problem with Roy serving. I also serve on this board. So.
You should ask us upon clarification. Is this for the board of directors or the advisory council?
That, sorry, this would be to serve on the advisory council.
So this is advisory council?
Yep.
So the board of directors position, is that still held by you and Rachel?
No.
Should I have a view? They can also then.
No, I thought she was the she was the advisory.
We had Martha Dexter in a vacancy for the advisory and we had you. This is just our, okay, you and Rachel.
I will get clarification, but as far as I can tell, from what I see here is this is for the advisory council. So I'll see if there is any other positions.
And we're still ahead of that.
Yep, yep, perfect. Yep, so. All right, is there any questions regarding that? So I would get clarification if there is another, other than the advisory position, what we need to fulfill. But as far as I know, everything is filled, but yeah.
I don't have a question specifically on this one, but Jake, I'll ask you and because it sounds like you have perhaps the the keeper of that information, but and I know we're going to talk about it later on as well, but if we wanted to get a listing of all the advisory councils, all the board, board of directors for all the different groups that have some amount of authority within the county government, who has that information? Can we get a listing of that?
Well, my office, we try to keep an ongoing working list so we can supply that from what we have. It's only as good as sometimes the information that is given from the outside, boards of commissions and that's not rolling stones. That's just, I mean, that's just the way it is. So individually, hopefully, individually each group would know what their proofs and terms are. I've also been trying to put those on the county website under your page or, but I don't know. It's kind of an ongoing growth process in building those too. And then remembering to update it because there's just so many different places. So, you know, come to my office and if we don't know or aren't sure, we can definitely put you in with the people.
Great happening as well.
Thank you.
Right. And further questions? If not, entertain a motion. We're pointing Roy Richardson as the aging resources rights council.
Small move. I support. Mueller.
Hi.
John.
Hi.
McCombs.
Hi.
Item number seven is resolution twenty twenty-five dash seventy-eight. This is designating Marion County voting representatives for the Iowa State Association of Counties, also known as ISAC. This was sent to, was this sent to all of us, Jake? I don't remember.
I'm not sure where.
I, I know I was CC'd on it.
It was a mass, it was a mass email from them as a result of all this, all this work on their, our bylaws. I think this is part of the requirements of when they're working through their bylaws and basically just establishing at this point, which should be subject to change tomorrow or something. If there was a change, that each director or department head or whatever, these would be all the affiliates when we go to ISAC meetings and I think we have our own affiliates and we can conduct our own business within that is I think this is part of their process of getting that authority. That's supposed to be designed now.
I don't know if there's any other questions for, obviously, they do have articles of incorporation and ISAC, I mean, we are members of ISAC and I think this is also just telling ISAC who is the representative that they must reach out to when it comes to conferences and things like that. So it's, I'm assuming it will be a yearly type of resolution.
It will not be. We have, or every two years, I guess. We, we supply them a list. We supply them after each general election, things like that. I, I don't know. I mean, to my knowledge, I heard nothing that this changes any of the structure of how we've done things or how they've done things. But it might be an angle.
Further questions? No, entertain a motion for resolution twenty twenty-five dash seventy-eight.
We could prove the resolution twenty twenty-five dash seventy-eight.
John.
Hi.
McCombs.
Hi.
Mueller.
Hi.
Item number eight is resolution twenty twenty-five seventy-nine. This is authorized FY twenty-six transfer funds from rural basic fund to the secondary road fund. This is standard that we follow Iowa code on board and as you are seeing, the road department can be a very complex department when it comes to all the different funding sources, but this is just a resolution and, and something we do a yearly, yearly basis. So this is the max somehow, is that correct?
So House file seventeen, some little curveball out there. So I would say ninety-nine percent of the max.
So, yeah, not to go down the weeds too much, but because of that legislation, which Tyler said is true, that this will be the max that we will be allowed to transfer per year authority at this year. So that's the whole House seventeen, eighteen bill, but it, but it did. But this will be the, a max that Michaela and I do on our monthly transfers. We don't transfer this money unless the taxes have been collected. So this allows us, this is in your, in the proof budget for this year, this amount. So this allows us to do the monthly transfer up into, up to this maximum. So this will be our maximum. All Tyler can try and explain that. It's like he said.
We talked about it.
Yeah. We've talked about it.
And then again, this is the maximum from rural basic. It is not the max transfer allowed from property taxes to the road department. Currently, we receive zero dollars from the general fund, which there is a maximum and could be transferred from the general fund into the secondary road funds. However, this is just from rural basic to the secondary.
Board.
Do you have other questions?
I'm just going to ask if anybody have any questions. Entertain a motion for resolution twenty twenty-five dash seventy-nine.
Make a motion to approve a resolution twenty twenty-five dash seventy-nine.
I support.
Okay.
So clear.
I'll support.
McCombs.
Hi.
Mueller.
Hi.
John.
Hi. Item number nine is resolution twenty twenty-five dash eighty. This would be Marion County credit card authorization and credit limits. Board, as you all know, that economic development director, we have hired Dan Mewitt. Before it was Carla and so now we need to make authority so that Dan can have a credit card. Carla has had had one previously and the amount is five thousand dollars. So pretty self-explanatory. It's just pretty much a name change. We need our resolution showing that name change. No other questions?
Move to approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash eighty.
Second.
Mueller.
Hi.
John.
Hi.
McCombs.
Hi.
Item number ten is the Marion County treasurer. This is a report that the treasurer supplies the board. This is just a receive and file. What this report is, is from July one of twenty twenty-four through July thirtieth of twenty twenty-five. Michaela did, is online today. If we have questions, she has several meetings. So Ms. Michaela, do you have any comments?
Yeah, I am here. This is what I consider one of my annual housekeeping duties and required by Iowa code three forty-nine dot one six dot three to present this to the board of supervisors each year. I always like to clarify for the board and for anybody watching that this is just a snapshot of all of the daily transactions that we perform in our office and the auditor's office every day. We compile those into our monthly financials, which are submitted to the board and other resources for review. And this is just an annual compilation of all of that information into one handy report. I always like to clarify again that I can run this at any time on a monthly basis. If, if somebody likes Um, I always like to clarify again that I can run this at any time on a monthly basis. If, if somebody likes this particular snapshot, I do have that ability.
Thank you, Michaela. Um, appreciate. Uh, your due diligence and obviously, um. I appreciate you being able to come online and explain that. Board, um. After review, I don't know if you have any questions? Not, you'll entertain a motion to file and receive.
No, uh, no questions, just one, uh, point of clarification. The report actually runs from July one, twenty twenty four to June thirty, twenty twenty five, not July.
Correct, yes.
Yeah, I think it's correct.
Yeah, it's correct.
Yeah, okay, alright. Any other? Questions, comments, Steve?
No.
Alright, entertain a motion, receive and file.
Move to receive and file with Marion County Treasurer, the board?
Support. John?
Hi.
McCombs?
Hi.
Beeler?
Hi.
Item number eleven, resolution twenty twenty five dash sixty six. Uh, this is the salary study task force recommendation. Mr. Tyler, you're coming to speak on behalf of the board.
They're all here, guys.
You do such a good job, Tyler.
So on behalf of the salaries. Study task force, I was appointed to speak today. Um, so the task force included myself, Missy, Christina, Chris and Michelle. Karen, which, uh, uh. I was appointed by you. And, uh, the RFPs were presented to you earlier this year for which we went out seeking proposals. In May and June, I believe in June when I was off, they. The, the task force, uh, had reviewed those and ultimately did not make a recommendation based off of the two proposals received at that time. So, uh, the RFP was slightly amended. Sent back out. For requests for proposals, uh, in July and, uh, we received four at the end of July, which were reviewed last week by the task force. Uh, ultimately, we received one. From one of the previous. Uh, submitters from June and then three additional companies. So one did not resubmit. Of the four. Received, uh, we received Austin Peters Group. Uh, J E R H R group. Gallagher and Condrigan Associates. And after review, uh, using the metrics and criteria stated in the RFP. Uh, this, the task force unanimously selected. The Austin Peters Group to make a recommendation to you to proceed with the salary study. Uh, there was some discussion during our task force regarding the schedule. The schedule, uh. There are lots of things that the committee, the task force liked about the Austin Peters Group, uh, the schedule did not. A hundred percent aligned with what we had asked for. However, we didn't feel that that. Would impact the. The budget discussions. Uh, you know, to phase one, as they propose it, would give you as the board an idea going into the next budget cycle. Uh, what you would look forward to for. Budgeting for the upcoming fiscal year of FY. Uh, was the twenty seven, hold account. And. Phase two. Would be the revision of the job description. So formally combined binding the research they had done in phase one to revise the job descriptions. Uh, so during phase one of the salary study portion. The research is done basically for revising the job descriptions, so the. This is my, again, our understanding proposal would be that they have done their research to understand each job and position. However, just formally reviewing the job descriptions and updating that would be done after the first of the year.
Tyler, it's my understanding, uh, that they will come on site?
Yes, there's so. So yes, they proposed to a minimum of two onsite meetings, um. Like most of these proposals, if we requested any additional, then that would be reimbursed at. At the rates they specified, however, they do. In their proposal. Uh, cost have two onsite meetings and. Um, couple other notes here. I think our comments from the task force were, was if they had the best overall proposal and the best understanding of what the county was looking for and asking. Of them as part of this study. Um, additionally, they had the best. Approach to outreach within the county's. Employee hierarchy. So basically having one-on-one discussions virtually with each department head, questionnaires and. Uh, random interviews with various employees to fully understand. Various positions.
They have a lot of experience in county and city government.
They did, and, uh, thank you for bringing that up. You want to mention that we reached out to a couple of the. References, one being the city of Knoxville. Uh, and I also talked last week with the city of Iowa City, who has used them on multiple occasions, uh, for very similar studies. Uh, they are very happy with, with. The Austin Peters Group as a whole, but also with Beth, who will be. Leading this and who submitted, so I believe Chris, you talked to Beth directly and we've got a greater impression from her as well. Uh, but the HR coordinator at the city of Iowa City had nothing but good things to say about. About Beth and their follow-up. So they. Did a study in two thousand, uh, like two thousand seven, two thousand eighteen or nineteen. And in between there, if they ever had any questions or kind of one-off scenarios that they could bounce off them, that Beth was always happy to answer those.
Looks like for me, um, reviewing the proposal, uh, they clearly. Have the, I mean, they're going to communicate, um, with the HR director. Um, they have communication with the board chair, but also, uh, the elected officials and department heads. At the end, um, you know, they will help. Present the, um. You know, their final report and, uh, help us understand how to execute. Yeah. I, overall, um, when reviewing the proposals, um, this to me was the best one. Uh, there were some others that arose to the top, but, uh, this one exceeded. When reviewing salary study.
I was impressed with the deliverables. It seems like I checked every box that I would be interested in communication if we get. Final question is, it says there's a section here that says the county will provide. Is there a recommendation approval actually do that? Uh, organization and direction in order to be that liaison between the county and. Uh, whomever we choose, probably this Austin Peters group. I'm assuming for, it says arrange all meetings, do calls, conference calls, including ranging meeting space, providing meeting confirmation. I'm assuming all of those things since it's HR related, it would probably go through HR.
I believe that's what was stated in our proposal, that HR would be the leading.
Would be the leading.
Big contact for their town. I agree.
I guess I will ask Lisa, um, in regards to the communication portion and helping to, uh. Facilitate some of that?
Also.
Okay. Uh, board, as you can see, the cost, um. Alright, turn to the page. Approximately fifty one thousand dollars. Uh, fifty one, eight fifteen for the cost. Yeah, which I think is, you know, this is definitely doable. Um, it wasn't, there was some that were much higher. Um, and there was a few that were a little lower, but.
Yeah, I, I, I would say that was the second lowest proposal cost-wise, however, the lowest did not include any onsite meetings. Which I don't know what there was.
Exactly about looking. Four thousand dollars.
But more than that, four thousand per trip though. Yeah, a thousand, you're putting a couple thousand dollars on being. The same as the, the other, the lowest. Phase proposal.
So for clarity, the fifty one eight fifteen is phase one and phase two?
Correct.
But this is total price?
Correct, but that, the timing.
No.
Of phase two is not.
No problem with that.
Ultimately, it didn't.
I didn't know what, I, yeah, I'm just a little cautious to make sure we don't write a check for fifty one eight fifteen in December and then get another bill. In March.
Yeah, that is correct. Twelve thousand of that is phase two.
Okay.
And I understand the whole thought process and this and I, I don't disagree with the knowledge of the bridge and all that. I'm only concerned is that when we do this study, that they actually. Taking consideration of future. Projected revenue. So, so that we don't. Get into a position that we have something we can't afford with the future.
So step three of phase one is preparing. I mean, he should, if you want to speak to this, please go ahead, but phase or step three of phase one is pay grade development and financial analysis. So they. They can't tell you what future budgets of doors are going to be, however, they can do an evaluation and look at. Uh, you know, they talk about salary ranges, financial scenarios, um, detailed financial calculation for employee movement up or down in the proposed pay scale. So I, I think that's what you're, you're asking. They, you know, we have those.
I don't want to get salary heavy and then lose our services because we can't afford, you know.
Sure. And ultimately, they're going to look at it. At one level and you're going to have to look at it from another and accept.
At all. I mean, it's a recommendation basically.
This is the, the salary, yeah, they will do the salary study. They will then, um, as you will see on, uh, item number seven. They do a preparation for final report and presentation to the board of supervisors. Uh, which is. We have approximately fifteen hours for that. Now, some of that is, is, it looks like it's virtual, but, uh. I think what everybody is looking at is, is I personally. Um, is, is saying, okay, we need to have this study to be able to understand. In which, when we have the departments come to us and ask for a, a salary increase. Um, this will help us to be able to say, okay. They, this study is here. We have trusted the, um, their, whether they're doing, you know, they're going to be looking at market and they're going to be also. Looking at it from a county and a city standpoint and to be able to give us that window of, okay, this is what this job should be paid. Instead of us sitting up here saying, oh, this is what we pay.
Well, I, I get that, KJ, but I still don't understand whether you can afford it.
Right, but I, I will, I know other. Counties and cities have, have leaned towards this because we are getting over a barrel of, one department may think that they're worth more. And this, this is at least keeping us so we're not being biased.
I, I get that part of.
It does say that they will make proposals for out of market recommendations and how to be fiscally responsible. For new grade placement for out of market. Positions and also a pay system for compression. Areas, so where you have everybody stacked together, maybe you need to get them strung out or somebody maybe is over. Overpaid, how to. How to transition through that. But ultimately, all that's going to be based off. How you can. You can accommodate that.
And I think we all said before, there's going to be maybe some that are getting paid too much and it's gonna. It's going to tell us that. And it's going to pause them.
I think, Steve, to your point, I think, I, I look at this as. Um, giving us objective materials in order to. Evaluate and manage a limited budget that we all know that we're facing.
Exactly.
But this is the way that it's going to help us manage that more effectively and more fairly between all the departments.
Well, the only, the only, the only thing that, the only, the only reason I bring it up, Jim. They may come up, well, this job has worked this much, I mean. We can't afford that.
And, and it probably will in some places and then we need to have the strategy for us as leaders. To say, okay, you know what? We can't give you, uh, and these are just numbers I'm with Rob, and we can't give you a ten percent increase because it's just not in the budget. But we will make sure that we annualize that increase to eventually get you up there within. A certain amount of time.
If our, if our projected revenues are.
We, we can't spend money we don't have, so. And, and those are pressures that we will continue to deal with.
Okay.
With that, um. Board, uh. We have a resolution before us today if we want to approve this resolution, uh, since within the hiring Austin Peters Group. That'd be resolution twenty twenty five dash sixty six.
Move to approve resolution twenty twenty five dash sixty six, the salary survey, uh, port foundation, I'll support.
McCombs?
Hi.
Beeler?
Hi.
John?
Hi. Item number twelve, um. This is a request and I will actually turn this over to Jim. Good.
I, yeah, item twelve is a request, uh, by me. Um, just simply to try to get an idea of. All the different boards that we have that have influence on our, how we departments and functions. Uh, because there are a lot of boards, commissions and board of directors and. Quite frankly, as the new guy, um, there's really no central location of, here they are. Here's what their responsibilities are, here's what their authority is. And. For us to really get our arm around what is the, our responsibility and our authority versus. What's the responsibility and authority of each one of the commissions or departments? How that impacts not only our individual departments, but also the budget. I mean, because we all recognize too, at the end of the day. We're the final authority when it comes to making the budgets balance or at least balance as closely as we can. And until we have that complete information of what's their responsibility, what's their authority and what. You know, what can they do? Is it a recommendation or, or whatever? We're kind of shooting in the dark until something pops up and surprises us. And I hate surprises when it comes to that. I love surprises at Christmas and birthdays, but that's about the only time I just plan for. And get it out on the table and organize it, understand it and have everybody operating from. A, a, a knowledge, a point of knowledge and objective decisions going forward. So it would really be good information to sit there and that's really the whole point of this was just to say. Who's out there? How many are out there? Who serves on those boards and what authority do they have? By no means am I suggesting that we're going to take authority away or make any changes or whatever. I'm just trying to get clarifications that what's out there, who's there and what authority do they have? By legislation or by, uh, uh, how do they derive that authority? Is it? Some article agreement or whatever that's. You know, fifty years old? I don't know. I just. I'm curious, not in anything. So.
So how do we get that information?
You know, that's just, that's. This is just a topic of discussion. I'm not really looking for anybody to pop up and say, okay, I have the magic bullet, but I think. This one and the next one are ones that quite frankly, we as leaders. Um, we cannot have conversations like this independent of in front of the cameras. How's that hurts? And, um. So I'm suggesting that we have that discussion now and say, okay, you know what? Let's appoint somebody. To start pulling all of that information together and I would be happy to volunteer to be. You know, the lead in that and I'll work with Jake and whomever the department heads are to say, okay. Who, who do you have out there that's, that does those things that we can. Create a, I won't say a document, but a, um, a, a location, a spot that's got all that information together.
I understand your frustration, Jim, but I've had that capacity to, we have these boards which are mandated for your legislature, but. Yeah. What, what power do they have to make the decisions that we have to fund?
Exactly.
And I think that's where you're at.
And, and you know, a perfect example of how. And I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna say, but you know, there are occasions out there where a board will change somebody's job type. Well, that's going to have a direct impact on what we just passed. And do they have the authority to do that? I don't know. That's the question. So we need to make sure that we get all of those, I won't say rules, but a level of understanding with ourselves. And the committees. To make sure that. Okay, we're all planned by. The established rules.
It's just pretty easy to make a decision when you're not paying to build.
Right. That's right.
Yeah, there is definitely some gray area, especially when it comes to code, um. I think probably the conservation one is probably the most direct, um, from what I can recall. But you're, you're right. But you're you're right, there are boards that fall um and there is some they have underneath them the commissions and what authority so. Jared, I appreciate.
I'm sorry, I didn't need to interrupt.
The water is warm, jump into the pool.
I just wanted to make a couple of comments, uh I certainly understand uh what you're driving at here. Um I would, these limits of authority come up all the time, this is something that that we deal with. And I just would like to generally say that a lot of these questions are so factually specific that you have to really, you know, look at you know, there aren't a lot of black letter law on the know who has authority to do what, you know. It it just depends, um you know, there are a lot of attorney generals opinions out there that discuss specific issues that have come up in the past, there are some court cases that have made right lines, but they don't cover all these factual um differences and specific instances, so there may be limitations on finding exact answers on all of these things and I just wanted to throw my two cents in, obviously, understanding who's out there and what the boards are and all that, that's simple. Um but each one of the questions do become pretty fact specific, I just wanted to throw that in.
Sure.
So Jared, are you asking that we making me more direct in what he's asking, but especially if there's gonna have to be research?
Sure.
Um so like if you're saying, all right, this board and what's their parameters in which they can do A, B, and C or whatever, you know, X, Y, and Z, whatever it may be.
That that can be a very difficult and unclear process is all I'm saying is that you know, we might be able to find cases or attorney general's opinions on specific issues that give us guidance, you know, that we may be able to say, okay, well, we can, you know, think this applies to another situation. Um but coming up with, you know, a list of here's your authorities, here's, you know, our authority. Um that the there may not be clear answers on some of those things.
And I appreciate that, I think that's exactly the point that I'm trying to make is right now um it's the wild west out there when it comes to some of this stuff because nobody's really in charge. When it comes to some of those things, because we don't know what what they have responsibility and authority to do, then they don't know what authority we necessarily have over what they're doing. And I think we need to take control of some of that and have at least an understanding of, okay, this is what you're you know, here's your limitations or this is the, these are the parameters under which you operate. And likewise us too, because we don't wanna step on toes if they have the authority, if if by um by law, they have the authority to do stuff. I don't wanna go in there and question those things and push back on that when clearly that's in their wheelhouse. But yet, there are other things that I wanna make sure that, you know, things are not just being adopted and go through the cycle of time and then become accepted when in fact, there's no basis for the ability to have those changes made.
Sure.
So I again, I'm just trying to make sure that we have objective decision making, that we're making decisions based upon knowledge and not just the way things have always been.
Jennifer, a a concern, and this is obviously just talking that, you know, if there was a promotion made or whatever, then obviously doing example of salary study. Then, you know, you look at that comparable and now we've done a promotion and now that comparable al- allows them to have a higher wage. And um I I I sometimes wonder, is it when it comes to whether it's like legislative wise, do they look at it as we set the budget? We give the budget to the boards and then they have to work within the budget. And so that's in the, there's a lot of gray area, it seems, and they they're very vague about it, and I don't know if they want to if legislators want to pinpoint how specific it'll get.
It's tough to make specific rules when it comes to these things, I mean, just broadly speaking, and each one of these you know, you have the elected force and then you have these semi autonomous groups, you know, border health and veterans affairs and conservation, all that that have their own bylaws and their own code sections that apply to them, but just broadly speaking, once that authority is given over, then they do have uh some autonomy and things like that. Uh each situation is different, each, you know, group is different, about by different things, but as a general rule, you know, the electeds obviously have their autonomy, but some of the boards, you know, once that's handed over to commissioner board and their um groups, then there are, there is some autonomy there. And I understand you're talking about where where's that line, right?
Exactly, that's that's all I'm trying to do is to say, okay, where is that autonomy?
Sure.
You know, and what's what's reasonable and what's appropriate and factually, how does that work? I'm I'm kind of a black man, I but yeah, I know it's not, it's not that easy.
I think all the electeds is pretty, it's 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 in code, pretty explains all of that. I think, so I think to help, whether it's Jake or Jared or Jared and we're doing research, is it those commissions that fall under us, so be like um we appoint somebody for to help, right, conservation, uh EMA nine one one, uh I'm trying to think. Conference board would be, they have their own levy fund, we represent, we're on representative for conference board, so I don't I don't know that that one, if I remember right, the the chart that goes down, that is a different line because there's there's a chart of organization regarding what falls under us. Uh and those are the ones, I mean, I think we need to be more specific in what we're asking then, because I think elected wise, that's already covered.
That's a lot more clear than some of the questions get asked about the groups that you were talking about, yes.
So, but yes, if you're more than, if you would like to take lead, I have no problem working with, you know, Jared and I don't know whoever else and try to figure that out and it would be nice to be able to say during budget time, we flip open and say, oh, nope, this is right, we give them a budget, they get to handle it the way, you know, whatever, so.
Sure. And we're happy to help, you know, if you have specific questions, you know, about, you know, different specific specific examples, we're happy to help with that and, you know, maybe give opinions on other closer calls, but I just felt the need to just kind of say upfront that this, there's not a lot of bright line rules when it comes to a lot of this, you know, there's a decision from nineteen seventy that kind of gets interpreted different ways, but maybe hasn't been fully litigated through the appeal process and stuff like that.
And I think we don't get to a situation where we have to do any shirt, any of that stuff, because that's certainly not my intention.
Sure.
So it's more a clearer, clearer understanding of what's going on and stuff, so.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jared.
We, um, look, yeah, just close, I'm gonna disclose discussion, entertaining, which are difficult discussion.
We'll close the discussion.
Miller.
Hi.
John.
Hi, McCollum.
Hi.
Item number thirteen, I believe, Jim, I'll turn this one over to you too, to regarding county logos.
Yep, again, this is uh another one that I've just become involved in with getting my county logo created, put together and then looking at other departments, other areas that have county, different county logos. Um and to me, coming from a business world, business environment and people will argue with me, but government is business, that's it needs to operate as a business and basically it is the business of governing. Um, one of the things of a business is its identity. And the one thing that I've really discovered, and again, I'm one of those things that we don't have an opportunity to have these individual discussions other than in an open meeting like this, so that's why this is coming up, otherwise I would reach out to these guys and and get their opinions on things. But and I'm not suggesting those that by legislation or uh by um function, really need to have their own logo, i.e. the sheriff's department. I mean, I get it, every county sheriff department in the whole state basically has their logo and then the names just change on it, just like conservation commission, I'm not suggesting that we make any changes to those type of things. I'm just suggesting that we at least look at uh having a standardized Marion County logo like this, this is Marion County, Iowa, so that that's truly our identity. And then the departments that we work for may appear underneath it or if it's a business card or whatever off to the side or whatever. But we all work for Marion County and that is our identity. And now we work for the individual department within that identity, so that we all recognize, yes, we are in fact all the same team. And I think that's one of the things that I would prefer, I would like to see us develop our uh county identity, our pride as a county, as a county employee. Because we've all got a lot of really great things, we do a lot of wonderful things for all the citizens within the county. And it's not just one department versus another department, it is the county that's providing those with the support of that individual department, and that's all I suggest, you can I would before I, before I go to you, I'd like to hear if if I'm way off on a tangent and quite frankly, if if that's the case, that's then I'm just bringing it up for discussion.
And you bring up a good point and I understand, especially coming from being this group now, I would just say that I did um we did do some research and I was thinking, because I knew that there was some sort of color base, so I worked on the website. Um I helped work with the county logo and so we come up with these. This is what we came up with, so like the road department um likes to use the black and white. There's some, there's some that don't wanna do color and so and then we also determined, we thought it was a nice feature to be able to add above it the office, so this example had auditor above it. Um and then this is the colors in which, you know, we're to use, um if we were to use a color form. I I like this. Um because I feel like it gives us the the logo itself, no matter what. The question I have is, is so let's say the sheriff's department, the conservation department and just for clarity, so that I can understand or whether it's county attorney or whoever else, whoever else has another logo. Um and that has worked under that, are you wanting both logos on the bottom, like door? You know, like first the Marion County and then theirs or theirs and then, you know, do you see what I mean?
I think from a sheriff and uh for those that have that specific professional level, not that we're not all professional and I don't, don't read into that, please, um but like the uh what the conservation commission, I mean, every county has their own conservation commission logo.
Which is unique, right, because I also think that goes back to I think it's interesting that Iowa doesn't have one and then it has like the county on it, you know what I mean, it's interesting that they're all unique.
And I think as long as those individual ones also carry the the Marion County, Iowa or Marion County designation on it, so it says sheriff Marion County, I'm okay. I'm not suggesting that we would change that, just like uh conservation commission. As long as it says Marion County on it, I'm okay with that, I'm just suggesting that the that the actual individual departments that we have, we all try to standardize on the Marion County logo like that and then it had. I mean, and I get it, having the 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 name up above, but then I mean, that then it becomes a problematic of what if I switch departments, now I've got shirts and business cards and all those other things, I'm moving from one department to another. Okay, so now I need to get everything all redone, which I guess if you hadn't done it, you'd still have to do that too, so but again, it's just, I'm just looking, my suggestion is that we consider creating a more standardized uh public identity, both county and county employees. And you can tell me if I'm all right or not, I don't care, but.
I I I personally feel that we already have and then those departments that have um, you know, have their own, and and I, that's just been a longstanding, uh we we just allowed those electeds to do, you know, what they chose they wanted to do. Uh I think this is the hard part sometimes when uh we, in our position um there's electeds, there's department heads and then those that serve our other commission, just like we spoke about. And then where do we press the button, where do we say, okay, this is what has to be done? And where does our authority? And I'm gonna quote something that I read not too long ago and there is no CEO of a county. We all have to work together for the greater good. And so it's a great, I mean, analogy and I get where you're coming from, but to me, I feel like we're doing that in this. Um, but but that's me, and so I'm going to, I wanna have an open conversation, so and Steve, I'd love to hear what your thoughts are.
Well, I I don't disagree with what Jim's saying, but I I kind of thought we were that way already, but 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 I get where you're coming from. I don't know what, what everybody else say.
Hey, yeah, I was, I raised my hand because I was gonna point out that she was about four or five years ago, I mean, that was quite a bit of an effort to switch to that and I I agree with it, having identity and I've tried for twelve years to get some standardization within our department and get our employees even to say their own departments to secondary roads or highway department, you know, of having an identity, I completely agree. Uh, I mean, that was thousands, thousands of dollars for us to change.
And I'm not suggesting from a fiscal standpoint, um being mindful of the budget. Uh even if we do make a change, I would not suggest that we go out and make wholesale changes and just replace everything and whatever. They say the next time we order things, if we need to order them, order them under the new standard rather than.
And I tried to say we're four or five years in, just just now finishing.
Yeah.
Transitioning to this logo and the standardization on on that, I think we're just finishing up, the business cards even for some of our employees also, so.
Me, yeah, I understand that history before, like people at the courthouse, we had and we got shirts, we had courthouse on ours, like we were all over the board, it was, we had something different, but maybe in the order gets transferred to the logo design here, I have some stuff in color, but most of our our letter and everything has that logo. We have it in color and some of it black and white.
I'm not, I'm not suggesting to make any changes to that, I'm just saying, my suggestion is we standardize on that for every year.
Doesn't that she do that though?
Um, I would just suggest not having the department heads at the top, I dare it as a as a underlying.
Having the circular logo be one.
Right, because first you represent the county, then you represent that department. Again, that's just, that's just me.
And that's definitely something I think that we can somewhat like, you know, if I I have a shirt that, you know, I purchased, the county is not paying for it. But you know, and it does have, I think, supervisors on the top of it, but I mean, yeah, it could easily be just the county logo, right? You know, it's just, I think that was what was submitted, um advocate for it, uh but, yeah, I don't know. Uh a lot of times my signatures, uh especially on emails and business cards. Um did we, and I'm just asking and I'm looking for a response, when we used like this has auditor on it and I'm not trying to pinpoint the auditor, so please don't take that, but it's how many people use this as their logo on below, do you have zoning on the bottom of yours? So like at your emails?
Maybe we parts in the top circle.
Yeah, yeah, sorry, yeah, yeah. Yeah, but it says like zoning on there versus, okay, instead of saying zoning on the bottom.
And I've gone away, I've personally gone away, when we switched to this logo for the thing, we did put auditor in our circle, but I've gone away from putting my name on like on the top of all envelopes and everything like that. Um so it just, it's the logo, uh then it's Marion County auditor uh on there instead of, and not having my specific name on it, um. Just that was re- recommended from another county that made sense, if you're buying bulk, just, you know, never know when.
True.
And there were some election law changes that that was advantageous to do that as well, but um so that's that's kind of what we've been.
Yeah, so it's kind of a mix of.
We use the logo, we use the logo in our signatures that says public health on the top or environmental health.
Okay, it's uh so on the circle.
Yeah.
And if it's in there, I didn't know that it would fit.
I think environmental health is a review. Yeah, and on our envelopes and all of that, we use that on the homes.
Okay, have we had any confusion? Do people not recognize that it's Marion County?
Not that I know of.
There is. I think it says Iowa on the bottom, which is beneficial because we do get stuff for the city of Marion and Marion County Indianapolis. But I don't think that's our fault.
Right. Yes.
Those people are gonna be confused.
I know, it's fine, but I don't like the HR, human resources is a bit online.
Okay.
And so the HR looks ridiculous. And so the H R looks ridiculous, so. I think it's on my business cards, but you can't even read it, so for me. If I was going to do it, I wish human resources would fit on top, mine, H R moves.
Right, I get that, what you're saying, you know?
That's just my.
What do people feel about the change? If we just stuck to Marion County like that? We didn't have, because I also think that this is a buy too. This is something that we need to hear from you. Because, I mean, obviously, if there's a lot of letterheads, there's a lot of stuff that's out there. Um, you know, we don't want to, as it stands.
Or am I raising a non-issue?
Well, if you have, if you have that in mind, you have letter, then you want to know what department it was coming from.
Well, right, I think if they would put, like, he puts his letterhead and then he puts. Auditor's office or whatever, you know? Yeah, yeah, it's whatever. So, but there, I I will also say this, there may be some that, um. And are we wanting this standardized like on all emails? Um, do we want a consistency there? Do we want? I mean, if we're talking about it, that's, I think that's important that we, you know, we discuss, I think everybody's pretty much email. They have it.
We use our own logo on our emails.
Okay, yeah, yeah, all right, yeah. But I mean, in general, does everybody have a logo that they use? At the bottom of their emails for signature lines? And and those departments that don't have specific are using, and I don't even know. What we use the blue for, but it was, it was suggested to us. Um, as one of the color schemes, but everybody's using either one of these three typically, right? This Tyler, you use on the side of your vehicle, the black and white?
Yeah, because they're cheaper.
Okay, and you have something, right?
And we have black and white and colored letterheads. Excel templates, everything standardized to our department, even like our email signatures, everybody's just the same. Within our department, not.
And and I just food for thought, it's my opinion. I do like having a department at the top, because to me, it feels like a department within the county. Where if you was at the bottom, yes, I work for Marion County and I work for Public Health, they're separate. You know what I mean? Where the department's at the top is a department within the county, it just feels more inclusive. If that makes sense.
Yeah, no, I I get that. I didn't have an issue with that, but I also think that it's. It's great to have these conversations, it really is, and it's good that we can all sit here. And guys, these are the hard parts. This is the hardest part about this job, is that you get these topics and bless your heart. For putting it as an agenda item, because, you know, we've got to discuss it, right? And then everybody's like, what's that about? So it's not easy. That is the hardest part about this job, is that we have to discuss it. As a, as a board before you, and um, sometimes that can make it, you know, a little bit uncomfortable, I guess, but. Anyways, yeah, I. I guess I'm not. I'm willing to hear what you guys, I mean, I'm fine with this, but. You guys are looking to do something completely different?
Keisha, this is Michaela.
Hi, Michaela.
I'm kind of chiming in midstream here, but I guess for my purposes, my. Preference would be to continue to have the department indicator at the top of the logo. And the reason I say that is being one of the second floor courthouse offices, so often there's a lot of confusion between. Am I contacting the auditor? Am I contacting the treasurer? Is this a reporter thing? Is this an assessor thing? And that's kind of an instant visual identifier when you get that envelope, what office that's coming from. Especially in emails where maybe if if it's emails coming from my staff, there's not. That Marion County treasurer indicator within the email signature line. Not that we we couldn't revamp that, but I I do like having that department indicator within the logo, just because it is very visual for our residents.
Thank you, Michaela, appreciate your input. I'm not seeing that.
There's not no overwhelming response for, yeah, we need to change it, so.
And, but again, I appreciate you bringing it up, doesn't hurt to talk about it, so. No further discussion, we'll entertain a motion to close discussion.
So moved.
I'll support.
John.
I.
McColl's.
I.
Beeler.
I.
For, I have number fourteen, board supervisor updates, Mr. McColl's, you know, dates.
I have none.
Okay, Mr. Beeler.
Uh, I do have a C I W D meeting this Friday and then a special patient meeting the next week.
Uh, I have public health, and other than that, more entertain a motion for adjournment.
Please adjourn.
Second.